When I used to.
Order this, the regular meeting of the Cordova Recreation and Park District for this Wednesday, January 16th, 2019 at 6:30 PM.
Thank you Chair Yearwood. To lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening, I'd like to welcome to the podium Chase Michelotti, who's our new recreation coordinator. And following the pledge, Chase will say a few words about his background.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, excuse me, good evening, everyone. My name is Chase Michelotti, I'm the new recreation coordinator at Mather Sports Center. And a little bit about me, I was born in Atlanta, Georgia, I grew up in Tampa, Florida, and I went to college at Virginia Tech. I majored in philosophy, and when I graduated, I moved back to Florida and then moved out to California, originally to become a firefighter. I found my way to the Parks and Rec Department in Chico, California, and I've worked there for approximately eight years as a recreation coordinator, or originally as a recreation specialist, then a recreation coordinator. And I'm currently working on my master's degree at Chico State in Recreation Administration, and I hope to finish that fairly soon. I've finished all my classes, I just need to finish my thesis, which is a daunting task. But I'm really excited to be here, and I've met a lot of great people here thus far, and I'm excited for the challenges ahead. Thank you.
All right. Roll call?
Director Riz?
Here.
Director Lineback?
Here.
Secretary Sloan?
Here.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Here.
And Chair Yearwood?
Here.
All right. Moving on, board disclosures on any action items? Anyone have anything they'd like to disclose? All right, doesn't look like it. So comments by the public on non-agenda items?
Thank you Chair Yearwood. Members of the public may address the board on district topics not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It is a violation of state law for the board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff, and I do not have any speaker cards.
All right. We'll move on to the consent calendar.
Thank you Chair Yearwood. Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar. This evening, we have three items for your consideration. Item C1 is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Directors on December 19th, 2018. Item C2 is to approve the park and facility special use rental applications from the Cordova Community Council for use of district properties for its 2019 community events. And item C3 is the district financial report for December 2018. And just to note, we have two payroll totals for December and November. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions about any of the items on the consent calendar?
Nope.
All right, seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
I move approval of consent calendar, items C1 through C3.
Second.
All right, motion by Director Lineback, second by Director Reyes. Roll call then.
Director Riz?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
All right, so move on to the presentations.
Thank you. Item D1 is a presentation by staff on the 2018 district year in review. This is an informative presentation only, no action to be taken by the board, and I'll turn it over to Finance Manager Matt Gaddel.
He brought these cheering squad.
We have to wait another minute because I have to pull it down since Chase is so tall, and I am not. All right, so here we are, we made it to the final end of the year, 2018. And I always believe that we need to take a moment to pause and reflect and understand our accomplishments and appreciate them. And we did have an amazing year. We had a lot of events and some volunteerism, ribbon cutting, some employee appreciation events, and park planning awards. So it was a fantastic year. It was so good that I even made a poem. How many finance managers do you know that are poetries, right? I did a... I read a lot of Dr. Seuss when I was a kid, so you'll understand that quite quickly here. So 2018, where did you go? "It was fun, fulfilling, and rewarding, don't you know?" Right, see? "The year brought hoppin' and hunnin' at Hagan where the children had a blast. Upon hundreds and thousands of eggs were found until the golden last. Meet the machines had horns a-blasting and shooting fire up in the sky. Together we celebrated sixty years of service, oh my. The team gave back to those in need with food, backpacks, and underwear. It's so nice to be part of an organization with such kindness and care. Volunteer appreciation is a thoughtful lunch. Green thumb, Mad Hatter, and luau, such a wonderful bunch. A fitness park course at Lincoln Village suddenly appeared. And Halloween time is filled with fun, pranks, and bananas are feared." By son, we know who you are. "Breakfast with Santa is always a nice treat. Joining the polar pear blunge is freezing from head to your feet. What we do is take home awards night after night. Incumbents continue on, we must be doing something right. So please sit back, relax, and enjoy this video. See you in 2019, this isn't our first rodeo." So it was, it was done through PowerPoint, and Katie Nagy Chow, our new marketing communications specialist, helped out a ton in this. And also all staff, they submitted pictures to us and we were able to put that together and then create the video, so it's fantastic, a lot of fun. I'm hoping she does the project next year by herself, but this year it was a collaboration between the two of us, yeah.
Yes, very nice, very nice.
So 2018.
All right, well, thank you. All right, committee reports, I don't see any, so we can just move on, all right? Public hearing, I don't see any there, so I guess we'll move into the regular calendar. Item G1.
Thank you Chair Yearwood. Item G1 is to adopt ordinance 18/19-01 of the Board of Directors of the Cordova Recreation and Park District, levying a special tax within Community Facilities District number 2018-01, Park Facilities and Services. And I'll turn it back over to Manager Gaddel.
All right, thank you Chair Jones, or Chair Jones, Clerk Jones.
Congratulations.
Chair Yearwood, I have to get used to all these new titles. So since I was busy with the year-end video, I would like to ask and recommend that we waive the second full reading of this ordinance and open it up for any discussion questions that you may have.
Does anybody have any questions? Doesn't look like it, all right. Anybody care to make a motion?
Chair Yearwood, I move the Board of Directors waive the full second reading and adopt ordinance 18/19-01 of the Board of Directors of Cordova Recreation and Park District, levying special tax within Community Facilities District number 2018-01, Park Facilities and Services.
In a second? All right, motion made by Vice Chair Danzel, second by Secretary Sloan. Yes, it is actually, good job. Roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Sure. G2.
Thank you. Item G2 is to approve the amended facility joint use agreement between the Cordova Recreation and Park District and the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District. And I'll turn it over to Recreation Supervisor Nina Signer.
Okay, so I've decided to turn this report into a poem. Kidding, 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 of course. Okay, so I am, I am, good evening, and my name's Nina Signer, Recreation Supervisor, and I am going to review with you a report prepared by Recreation Superintendent Jill Nuns. The purpose of this report is for the Board of Directors to approve the amended facility joint use agreement developed in partnership with the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District. So a little bit of background, CRPD in the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District has had a joint use agreement since 1985. A first revision of the agreement was in May 2007. Since then, the two groups have been working together to make sure that the agreement is fulfilling the needs of both entities. So the purpose of, let's see here, the purpose of the amended agreement is for developing, maintaining, and operating community recreation facilities and programs. So a little bit more background about what's amended in the agreement, it includes specific, specifically naming the facilities that we are allowed to use. So CRPD, we are allowed to use classrooms, multi-use rooms, cafeterias, gymnasiums, restrooms, parking lots, and other facilities which may be necessary for use. School district property that we aren't allowed to use, that isn't included in the agreement, are the Mills Softball Sports Complex, Cordova Stadium, and the Cordova High Performance Arts Center. And then for use of the school district for our properties, similar playing fields, recreation facilities, multipurpose rooms, community centers, meeting rooms, and other, some other facilities. And then the facilities ours that are excluded for use is the aquatics facilities and sports complexes. So if we wanted to go into an agreement to use either of the facilities that are excluded, that would be something outside of the joint use agreement that we're talking about today. There's no physical impact, and yeah, that's basically it. So the recommendation is to, of course, approve the amended agreement, and then the agreement is also in your board packet. Does anyone have any questions?
No questions?
I don't really have a question, I just have a comment. I, I just think it's great that these joint use agreements, you know, are being updated, maintained, that there's good communication between the two agencies, so I just appreciate.
We're really excited, so yeah, me too.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Make a motion?
Sure, absolutely.
I move the Board of Directors approve the amended facility joint use agreement between the Cordova Recreation and Park District and the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District.
Second.
All right, motion by Secretary Sloan, seconded by Director Reyes. Roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
Thank you Nina.
All right, item G3.
Item G3 is to adopt resolution 18/19-33 approving the park development agreement with Crestly Homes Corporation for the Sunridge Village Development Project, and authorize the chairperson of the Board of Directors to sign the same. And I'll turn it over to Planning Manager Laura Taylor.
I'm tall. Okay, that feels about right. Okay, so I'm excited to have the opportunity to present to you yet another park development agreement, as development is certainly doing well in our region. And we have with us in the audience Deana Ellis, who is a representative of Crestly Homes, if there's any questions we have or whatever, but she's certainly here to support us, and so we're happy about that. So a little bit of background on this project, this is, project is called the Sunridge Village. It's also been called in the past Sunridge Lot J and Crestly Lot J. And I want to call your attention to the map over there on the wall, that this project is inside of the boundaries of the city of Rancho Cordova. This is Douglas Road, there's quite a bit of activity occurring on the south side of Douglas Road right now, and this project is kind of like right smack in the middle between Grantline Road and Sunrise Boulevard, and it's just on the south side of Douglas Road. So, okay, so the project, it's a little bit of a smaller project than most of the other projects, it's sixty, or seventy-six acres, and it's going to build out to about 369 residential units. And they are required to dedicate 5.35 acres of parkland that will be a neighborhood park. They, Crestly Homes will build that neighborhood park as a turnkey project, so they'll hire the consultants and the contractors to design it, and we'll have oversight of that, of course. The project has been in the making for thirteen years, for over thirteen years. They've owned the land for quite a bit longer than that. And back in twenty, 2006, the city council approved a development agreement on the project, and then it was amended later in 2014. The, the park development agreement mirrors some of the terms and conditions in the city's DA with the developer. And then it also adds additional information about the requirements for, you know, triggers and the, you know, following the Cordova Rec and Park standards and processes, and so it's a little more detailed. This project has a unique element that's included in the PDA, it's not something that's typical. And immediately next to the Sun, the Sunridge Lot J development is what was called the Sunridge Park Development, okay? And there was a little sliver of land right on the western boundary of Sunridge Park Development, a point oh eight, or a point eight acre parcel that is contiguous with the Crestly Homes Neighborhood Park parcel of 5.35 acres. So we're going to develop them at the same time. And because that point eight acres is outside of the boundaries of the Sunridge Village Development, the developer, Crestly Homes, will be reimbursed for their expenses it costs to design and, you know, build that park. And so that is funded, covered under the, the Park Impact Fund that the city holds, that they've collected from other housing projects and things within the Sunridge specific plan area, okay? So I've recently spoken with Brett Hoag, who is the developer representative for the Sunridge Park Development, which is the owner of the point eight acres at this point. And he intends to start grading that property to bring it up to our basic requirements before we're willing to accept it for ownership in April. And so I think that will be in enough time to be able to accommodate the Crestly Homes schedule for construction of the neighborhood park, because ultimately, we want to be able to do it all together as one unit, that would be the most efficient way to do this. So we're excited that that will be able to come forward in a, in a convenient way. And so at some point in the, in probably midsummer, when they're done with their grading of that point eight acres, we'll be coming before you with a request to accept that point eight acre parcel for ownership, so that we can have that constructed at the same time. Let's see, so the PDA requires the developer to turnkey the design and construction of the neighborhood park, and also to pay a community park and district-wide fee component of $2,464.41 per residential unit, and that is in the 2019 value. The PDA has an inflationary factor that is, that will be added to that fee on an annual basis. The fully executed park development agreement is required before the city will allow the developer to move forward with the recordation, recordation, of their final map for the project, for their subject. So what that is, is when they actually break down the subdivision into individual lots for residential home construction, that's called the final map, and the final small map. And that will go before the city council next week for approval, and before it can actually be recorded, we have to have the PDA in place. And we're, we're on a good timeline to get that done, and Danielle and I have been working hard to make that happen, and same with Deana, and so we got all our ducks in the row, if providing that the board sees fit to approve this PDA tonight, okay? Okay, the other thing is, is that the developer intends to annex into the city's, or I'm sorry, into the district's Community Facilities District, which is the one that you just did the, the final reading on, or waived the final reading on. And so you'll be seeing that come before the board in February, because the PDA requires that, that CFD be implemented prior, you know, within forty days after recording the final map. So that is a pretty good summary, and I'm available to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
I have a question, so this is that, the parcel that's across the street from the, from the Sunridge Park?
No, it's actually on the, so what's a little bit confusing about the Sunridge Park, so there's the Sunridge Park Park, and there's the Sunridge Development, okay? And the Sunridge Park is on the eastern edge of the whole development called Sunridge Park, okay? The point eight acres is on the far western edge of that.
Far western, okay. Were there power lines going through that park, I forget?
Not this one, no.
Oh, okay.
This, this one, the, the point eight acre parcel is immediately adjacent to an elementary school site. I don't know if that helps you, but that's a factor in this, so.
Okay. Anyone else?
I just, I'm curious about this, and I don't know if it has anything to do with the park district or not, but this city neighborhood green, can you talk about that?
Sure. Okay, so the city has an open space dedication requirement in their zoning code that requires one acre per thousand new residents of, you know, to be donated for open space. And they recently changed that, well, I mean, maybe like within the last two years, I think. It used to be two acres per thousand, and then they reduced it down to one acre per thousand. So what they use, what that, that one acre is used for is to provide gathering spaces, okay? Or, you know, sometimes there's another reason to have an open space that they, but the primary purpose is gathering spaces. The city wants to see pocket parks, kind of, I guess that would be a good description of them, small little areas. And, and also part of it will eventually, their intention is to build a large urban plaza area at some point in the future, so. And it is completely separate from the Quimby Parkland requirements, which is something that we are the authority of and that we administer, and that's five acres per thousand. And so, you know, we just have to be really clear that we keep them separate. And there have been some instances in the past where the lines got blurred and it was hard to know whose land was whose, but in this case, it's very clear cut, you know, separation.
So, part of that question is, so are you telling me then that that neighborhood green? So, part of that question is, so are you telling me then that that neighborhood green will be maintained, managed, and, and run by the city, or?
Yes, and they have, the, the amount of acreage that needs to be maintained for neighborhood greens, they're, they're required to open space, they have their own CFD for that. So, we're, that is not on our, that's not our responsibility to maintain that.
Okay. One more question is, the explanation on the park fee of two thousand six hundred sixty-one seventy-six. So, this is because they are going to be building a turnkey park? Is that what it is? Because how does this compare with the park, the, the, the park fee that we have for the city of Rancho Cordova? That's about eight or nine thousand.
Right.
Okay, how does that affect it?
Sure. So, right now, the, the park fee component, actually, I, I think it's nine thousand seven hundred is the next study with the inflationary factor on it. And so, within that nine thousand seven hundred, there are, there's a neighborhood park fee component, a community park fee component, a district-wide facility component, and an administrative fee component. So, this amount is, so the, so the developer has to build the turnkey park a hundred percent out of their pocket, basically, and there, there's a budget set for that in this park development agreement. And then, but then they also, in addition to that, have to pay this additional fee per household that goes into the pot, that is then utilized as we build community parks within the Sunridge Specific Plan area, or other larger community facilities, maybe a community building, you know, and, and amenities that require more than one development to provide the population to justify that, like an artificial turf field or something like that.
Okay, and that's what the two thousand six hundred is?
Right.
It's a small development, so you wouldn't see, it is a very small development that they're proposing. So, it's a neighborhood park pulled out of those options is what's being applied to this case.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
I'll move.
Sure.
I will move that we adopt Resolution eighteen slash nineteen dash thirty-three, approving the park development agreement with Crestley Homes Corporation for the Sunridge Village Development Project, and authorize the chairperson of the Board of Directors to sign the same.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Director Reyes, second by Director Leinbach, roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Leinbach?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
All right, moving on to G four.
Thank you. Item G four is to approve the Douglas ninety-eight Community Park Master Plan and authorize the district administrator to instruct Woodside Zero Five N LP to proceed with the development and construction of the park. And I'll turn it over to Planner Christina James.
Good evening, Chair Yearwood and members of the board. So, different development, different stage in the development. This is Douglas ninety-eight, and tonight I have the privilege of presenting to you two park master plans from this development. First, I want to introduce you to two key players of the development team. We have Brian Cutting with Woodside Homes and Dan Miller with Calendar Associates, the landscape architect. So, tonight, if you wouldn't mind, oh, I haven't, thank you, there. If you can take a look at the map, this is the location of the Douglas ninety-eight development on just south of Douglas Road and to the west of Grant Line. This development is five hundred and twenty-eight dwelling units, and the developer anticipates construction on the park sites next summer. Here, you can see a close-up of the development with the two parks we're going to talk about tonight, labeled B to the west, and A, that's the community park in the center. B is one point one acres, A is seven point three. And here's the proposed master plan for the neighborhood park. This neighborhood park, the, the PDA for this development was brought to you in October. And if you recall, the PDA has description on, of the theme of the park. The park is to be one that is contemplative in nature, that it promotes health and wellness of the neighbors. So, I'm going to go through in detail each of the different elements of the park, and then we can refer back to this master plan. So, if you take a look, that play area there, in between the picnic shelter and the demonstration garden, we've got proposed a disc swing, which is a popular element. We, we have those in other parks. We've noticed that they've been well-used and appreciated, also a net climber and a rotating disc. Also proposed for the playground is a nature-inspired climber to go along with the, kind of the natural theme of the park, some individual spinners and a zip line, which is an element we haven't done yet in our parks. Also proposed for this master plan, if I take you back to the, you can see the focal point of the park that's being proposed is a meditative labyrinth, which would be composed of decomposed granite pathways with native drought-tolerant vegetation. There's a representative image in this slide. You can see the drought-tolerant vegetation examples in this slide. And then, also proposed along a pathway that would surround the park are three fitness nodes, again promoting health, wellness, and those, an example photograph of what those might look like is also shown here. The park also includes a shade structure, which would accommodate roughly forty-eight people, a two-unit prefabricated restroom, a native plant demonstration garden, which has been located, if you can see back to the concept plan, directly adjacent to the play area. So, there, there will be some, there's access for children, there'll be some, hopefully, interaction between those two spaces. And then, on either side of the labyrinth, around the labyrinth, we have native ornamentals. And then on either side of that, we have open lawn for multi-use activities. The schedule for the project, the developer anticipates model home construction this month, production home in February, and then the construction of the park this summer. It's a turnkey, so we, although we don't hold the contract for the consultant or the general contractor, CRPD has set up a turnkey process that keeps us very involved in each stages of the project, reviewing cost estimates, reviewing construction drawings, and then reviewing the construction as it's occurring. So, I'm available to answer any questions that you might have.
Anyone have any questions? Don't see any.
No.
All right. Anybody?
Go back to the diagram of the community park. So, it's basically, there's no sporting things like, you know, basketball or, or anything like that, or bocce, or, no walking path of going around it, nothing like that?
Yep, you can see the, the walking paths circulate the park, and then there's the three fitness nodes. But this, this master plan doesn't include any sports hard courts.
Seven point eight acres?
Seven point three.
Seven point three? Small community park.
A pretty small community park.
Okay. Will there be electricity out there by the picnic area?
Yes, and security lighting along the pathways. You, so you can see, it's labeled, there, it's the small white circle, sorry. Thank you, Matt. So, along the pathway, there will be, and the fourteen-foot tall are, are standard, are light standards for security.
I, I do have a question. What is a contemplative node? Is it a bench? I mean?
So, that's shown as a seating area, a bench, accessible bench with a, a concrete pad. So, those would be spaced, as you can see, along the pathway. The idea is we're providing a passive space for reflection. And so, all the area underneath provides shade and a walking path, and then these, these individual nodes for people to relax in the park.
All right, all right. Would anybody care to make the motion?
I move the Board of Directors approve the Douglas ninety-eight Community Park Master Plan and authorize the district administrator to instruct Woodside Zero Five N LP to proceed with the development and construction of the park.
All right, motion by Director Leinbach, second?
Second.
Second by Director Reyes, roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Leinbach?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
All right, item G five.
Thank you, Chair Yearwood. Item G five is to approve a name for the future community park in the Douglas ninety-eight development. And I'll turn it back over to Manager Taylor.
Okay, so we have this incredible new community park that you folks just approved for us to proceed on. Now, we need to figure out what we're going to call this thing, right? So, in your staff report, I have given you some suggestions for a name for your decision and choice. As a little background on this project, I, I did work with Brian Cutting, and we started from a much larger list, and we did narrow it down to be more in compliance with our current park naming policy. And a little background on this, that many of the street names in this development will be named for parks and areas of interest near the coast of California. So, the developer's selection of names for the parks reflects consistency with the street names and the California coastal theme. The Board of Directors of, of the district have the final discretion in name selection for the park. So, the three names that we have agreed to present to you for your choice is Glass Beach Park, and that name is consistent with the adjacent street name on the north side of the park. And you can see it on that plan right there. And then the Inspiration Point Park. There are several ocean views and mountain peaks in California with the name Inspiration Point. And also, the park has been designed with features that inspire inner reflection. So, we thought that was a potential name. And then Labyrinth Park highlights the name, the park's proposed unique feature in the center of the park. A park name is needed in order to prepare the signage and, and as part of the construction documents that they will start working on, and so, it'll be nice to have a name associated with the park. And so, upon board approval, the district administrator will instruct Woodside Homes to proceed with the approved name, so.
All right, so, what do y'all think?
I thought Glass Beach Park was because of the, you know, the streets, so it's not difficult to find. And most of the time, that's what happens, is people are looking for the park, and at least if they know the street. So, that sounds doable.
There's actually a Macarthur State Park, you know? So, Glass Beach is, is that like the little pieces of glass you find on the beach?
There, there is a beach on the ocean called Glass Beach.
Fort Bragg, yeah.
It's going away, but yeah.
It's an interesting story as to why it's called Glass Beach. What about you, Director Leinbach, what do you think?
Well, I mean, I have no objection to Glass Beach. I think it's, it's kind of a pretty name, but honestly, I love the labyrinth.
Yeah.
And I think it would be really cool to sort of let people know that's where the labyrinth is.
I, I kind of agree with that on that. What about you, Vice Chair Danzel?
I like one of the names, I just was, I like the Inspiration Point, I just don't like the point part of it. I like Inspiration Park, or Reflection Park, something to that. That's more me, but, because we talk about these meditation places and this meditation library, things like that. So, I mean, I'm open to whatever, but the, you know, and I understand why we want to put that, the Inspiration Point, because of the, the area, just like Glass Beach Park, but just, I just don't like that word for some reason.
Fair enough. All right. I kind of like labyrinth, myself.
I like reflection.
I have a question.
Sure.
What's this Macarthur? Is that how it's?
Macarthur.
Macarthur, or how do you pronounce this way? Macarthur?
Oh, that's.
And is this, normally, you know, the names have something to do with, I know some developments where it's all Greek names, or it's goddesses, or it's whatever. So, is Macarthur?
Caraker.
Macarthur?
Yep. So, not a Greek god.
Definitely not, it sounds Irish or something.
No, so all of the roads in this subdivision are named after coastal parks, coastal plants, coastal features. The, the subdivision itself is going to be called Cypress, and all of the home complexes, new home complexes are going to be called after trees you would find on the coast, like magnolia and so forth. Macarthur is a state park just north of Fort Bragg. So, you have Macarthur State Park, and then Glass Beach is just to the, it's on the coast there in Fort Bragg. Great place.
Oh, boy, that'll be really nice to hear people say it every which way, Macarthur.
You don't, you don't like Macarthur? Macarthur Community Park?
That's going to be interesting, yeah.
It does, it does help when it's not in all caps, because it's capital M, A, C, capital K. So, that does help.
Macarthur.
People can't even say Feder Spill.
That's right. Thank you.
Oh, and Allstrom, yeah. All right. Would anybody like to make a motion for a name?
Wouldn't you like?
Well, I mean.
Yeah, go for it.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Directors name the future community park in the Douglas ninety-eight development, Labyrinth Park.
Do you have a second? Labyrinth Park. I'll second. Motion by Director Leinbach, seconded by Chair Yearwood, roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Sure, why not? I'm not going to spend any more minutes here trying to figure out why, but sure, why not?
Director Leinbach?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Well, I already know the outcome of this vote. So, I'm going to go aye.
We'll get the next.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
All right, there you go.
Labyrinth Park.
So, we're going to move?
Better than the Shining Park, right?
Well done, all right, item.
We're not yet done, we might get that.
How will those hedges get?
Was that G five?
The shining.
All right, G six?
Right, Redrum Park, yeah, good one.
Thank you, Chair Yearwood. Item G six is to approve the Douglas ninety-eight Neighborhood Park Lot B Master Plan and authorize the district administrator to instruct Woodside Zero Five N LP to proceed with the development and construction of the park. And I'll turn it back over to Planner James.
Good evening again. So, we'd like to go over the master plan for the one point one acre park site that's to the west of the community park. Again, this Douglas ninety-eight development, south of Douglas Road. This would also be anticipated to be constructed next summer. It's that Lot B, one point one acre site. And this is the proposed master plan. One interesting thing about this site is the developer's consultant landscape architect had to find a way to resolve a grade difference of six feet plus between Hurst Castle Way and Cypress Grove Drive. So, the, the pathway you see running through the park is actually fully accessible. They were able to resolve that, so that's a, a nice feature. So that's a nice feature. This will be a gently sloped park facing west. You can see two open lawn areas, a small picnic area to the south. Again, accessible walkways throughout. And it's, it's a park for neighbors to come. It's a green space where they can have informal picnics, maybe bring a dog, throw a ball around, just have a nice passive green space that's a place to meet neighbors. One other feature I should point out is there was discussion of that corner being a potential space for art. The city of Rancho Cordova is developing their art program. So as that gets organized, this might be a potential location for one of those public art pieces. That wouldn't be the developer's responsibility. That would be through the city. But it's an idea that we, that we had. The furnishings that are being proposed are our standard concrete, commercial-grade, durable furnishings. We're also proposing no mow along that slope. So it's a 20 to 30% slope. And much like hillside, putting no mow there eliminates the need for mowing. Once, you know, once a year mowing, it reduces water and then drought tolerant shrub plantings, excuse me. So the schedule for this park, again, same as the community park, model homes in January, production homes February. And hopefully, or the anticipation is that it would be constructed in the summer. All of this, of course, is contingent upon the market and home sales. Any, any questions? I'm here to answer.
Any questions?
Nope.
Seeing none. Entertainer motion?
I'll move that we approve the Douglas 98 Neighborhood Park Lot B Master Plan and authorize the District Administrator to instruct Woodside 05N LP to proceed with the development and construction of the park. This is Part B.
Motion by Director Reyes, a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Secretary Sloan. Roll call vote?
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
All right, item G seven.
Thank you. Item G seven is to approve a name for the future park in the Douglas 98 development, currently known as Neighborhood Park Lot B. And I'll turn it back over to Manager Taylor.
This is a fun night, I feel like. Got a lot of fun things to present to you tonight. Okay, so just like the community park, we also want to come up with a name for the neighborhood park because the same conditions apply. We want to be able to start developing the signage and things and have the park have a name. So the names that are presented in the staff report are listed in the order of the developer preference. The first one being Cypress Grove Park. This name is consistent with the adjacent street name on the west side of the park. Crescent Park is reminiscent of Crescent City and Crescent Beach. Those are familiar California coastal icons. And the other thing is because of the sweeping curves in the park, it felt like Crescent is kind of reminiscent of those sweeping curves in the park. Another idea is Sunset Park. Because as you look at the diagram in front of you, the Hearst Castle Way is a higher elevation than Cypress Grove. And so we're thinking that there, that might be a really nice place to watch the sunset towards the west. So that was another option that's being presented to the board for their selection.
All right, all right. What are your thoughts, Director Reyes?
Sounds like they prefer the Cypress Grove Drive. And I, I always figure sometimes it really helps when you're trying to look for a park. So I'll go for that again. I presume that's what.
I will, I will go for that too, only if you plan on some visions of cypress trees out there. Because I know I've got some in my backyard that are beautiful. They do well in the weather up here.
I'm going to have to turn, I don't.
Cypress are, they're very kind of twisty and evergreen, always green and kind of a nice, I know that Golden Gate Park has a bunch of them.
You can even have a grove of it, yeah.
You know, I just think if you're going to call it Cypress Grove Park, I've got to see some cypress in there somewhere.
I feel like you need more cowbell. I need more cowbell.
They're, they're pretty hardy. I've got them in my backyard and they're very hardy. They're very artsy.
You know, we could certainly do some, a few. I don't know.
I'm not saying the whole, you need a grove, okay?
Just create one.
Cypress Park or Cypress.
Grove Park.
Did they use grove? Cypress Park? How about just Cypress Park?
Director Lineback, any thoughts?
Nothing, no, nothing in addition. I'm, I think Cypress Grove Park is fine.
How about you, Vice Chair?
I am okay with that name as, as long as we can try, like Secretary Sloan said, try and work at least a few in there. I mean, that's my only thought.
The kids come and people come and they can.
They're very zen trees. All right, you look at those.
All right, who would like to make a motion then?
Well, I'll move that we approve a name, the, the name Cypress Grove Park for the park in Douglas 98 Development, currently known as Neighborhood Park Lot B.
All right. Motion by Director Reyes, a second?
Second.
By Vice Chair Danzel. Roll call vote?
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Oh, why not?
There we go. Sounds good.
All right, moving on to item G eight.
Good idea, Rick.
Thank you. Item G eight is to adopt amendments to District Policy Section Two Board Procedures, Committees of the Board of Directors, removing the requirement to make appointments to all standing committees. So just as a refresher, the last time we updated this policy was in January of 2017 to add the PMRID Oversight Nominating Committee. And as we go along, as you know, we're always evaluating the purpose and efficiency of our standing committees. And although we've always made appointments to all of the committees, we haven't activated all of them. So we're continually looking at that process. The most active committees have been Budget and Finance and the District Policy Committee, meeting an average of three to four times a year. We wanted to build into the policy some flexibility about whether or not to activate all of these committees. And so we are suggesting that the language be changed from standing committee appointments shall be made to may be made. That opens up a lot of flexibility as whether or not the committees will be activated. And then as we go along in the district policy process, we will be looking at reevaluating all of the committees and appointments. If you have any questions, I'm available.
All right, any questions?
No, it doesn't make sense.
No, all right. Who would like to make a motion?
I'm, I want to make sure I have the right one, yeah. I move the Board of Directors adopt the proposed amendments, the District Policy Section Two Board Procedures, Committees of the Board, removing the requirement to make appointments to all standing committees.
Second.
All right, motion by Vice Chair Danzel, seconded by Director Lineback. Roll call vote?
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. All right, moving on to item H, Board of Directors Items.
Thank you. Item H one A is regarding training. We had none in this last period. So item H one B is Board Member Community Activities and Meetings Report.
Oh, is that me now? Already, dang. All right, I guess we'll start down there at the end of the dais with Director Reyes.
Yes. Chair Yearwood, I had attended the teleconference of the CAPRCBM Board Meeting, which is, I think it's California Association of Park and Recreation Commissioners and Board Members. Did I get that right? But this is their executive committee meeting. And so they were discussing the fact that we are going to have, they're going to be celebrating 50 years. There is going to be a banquet on, for the awards installation, annual awards and installation banquet. And this is going to be on Thursday, March 21st. I believe it's at the same time with the CPRS conference. They normally have it happening at that time. And so they have it, they will have it at the Blueprint Restaurant and Bar on 11th Street in Sacramento. So they have, this was a discussion as to what kind of menu and all this. And they did decide, before, I think they used to have it at the hotel, but that was too expensive. So basically, wanted to give our staff also information because I'd like, you know, look into what awards they have. We probably may have parks or opportunities to put in for an award. And then we will go ahead and I'll keep you informed as to the menu and the banquet and all this and see if, if our board would be interested in attending. That's it. Thank you.
Director Lineback?
Yes. So I attended the Rosemont Community Association Meeting on January 3rd and I really appreciated the help from the staff to give me updates on things that they are interested in currently at that association. What I found interested is that they, they were just, they were very interested in the update on the playground for Primrose Park. I think at least in that association, they're still very committed to the swings. So they understood that that would push it back, which didn't make them too happy, but I think they appreciate that the swings are still in the mix. They were very impressed by the cooperation between the district and the Little League and the Little League supplying a grant for upgrading, I guess, the dugouts, right? And, and so they really liked that. What I thought was interesting, shall we say at least, that they had no comment on the update about the pathways in Rosemont Park, which I consider to be the big deal of all of that. But they just sort of accepted the update on that project. And I did get some feedback that they would be interested in working with the district and getting some kind of a water feature in Rosemont Park. However, there was an appreciation that the Measure J funds are really being used at this time to help with a lot of deferred maintenance that has had to occur over the years. And, and so they're not really looking for Measure J to necessarily supply a brand-new facility and actually so that they would be looking into sources of grant funding that they could bring to the district to see if perhaps a splash pad could be built in the future. And I liked the fact that they understood the constraints the district's operating under in terms of, you know, the needs for those Measure J funds, you know, because we really do have to maintain what we already have. And much of it, you know, didn't happen when it perhaps optimally could have happened, so. And that's my report from the RCA meeting. I also attended, speaking of lots of letters, the RDAOP Board Meeting. And just a couple of things. They set up the meeting schedule for 2019, which is essentially every other month. And they, but, and interesting, and the, the board did approve the redevelopment payments for the year, which is a mandated function of that board to authorize the payment of what are already established obligations. But interestingly enough, the city of Rancho Cordova was present at that meeting because they had notified the Oversight Board that they have completely taken all of the redevelopment projects into the city so they are able to re, to dissolve that redevelopment agency. And so that was approved by the Board of Directors. So the city of Rancho Cordova no longer has a redevelopment agency. And that's my report.
All right, Secretary Sloan?
Okay. On January 8th, I attended the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association Meeting. Nina was also present. And a couple of, three items involving the Park District came up. One was, I understand that there was some plumbing going on out at the Little League field and Mr. Dobbs went out there to check it out and it was all being put in wrong, too high. It was like three inches deep and what should be 12 inches deep. So he put a stop to it and made sure that was done correctly, that was taken care of. That's all part of the $6,000 that they got for the, the enhancement grant from the city. The items that came up about, that involved the district. Was here a second ago. Just let me go. It's weird. Someone stole it. This must be it. Here it is. The Positive Coaching Alliance will be looking for some other building structures to hold their, their, it's free classes for the coaches or parents, whatever they, they can get in there to take the Positive Coaching course. And they were talking about using possibly the Neil Orchard Senior Center as a place or possibly Hagan, Hagan Park Building. So they're going to, Nina will probably take that to Patrick and follow up on that. Also, the Powell Junior Giants seem to be looking for a home field. And this would be through July 1st through August 7th, six weeks, where they would want to use this field. All they really need, they said, is like a backstop. And I think they're using White Rock Park. But they were talking about using possibly Dave Roberts Park. So that's something that you need to address them with because our Little League players pay. This is, I think the Powell is free to these kids. So what we will offer, I don't know if it's something that we can, we can, we can probably, they probably want it for free. So I don't know if that's going to work. So I mean, we need to discuss that with them. You need to or someone, okay? And that's it for the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association. Today, I attended the C California Association Recreation Park District's Board Meeting. And one of our board members, Al Magrean, has lost his home up in Paradise. As did, I think, three other, or four, three, four out of the five Park Board members lost their homes. And all five city council members lost their homes. And we're talking about now that some of the people have to run for office again, their residency's not there. That's kind of a, our, the, the conference that we're going to have in Tahoe this year is going to be, there's going to be a panel. And it's going to have people, directors, administrators, people that were affected by these, the fires and districts that lost a lot and how they're recouping, how they're, they're going for the, the governments coming and helping out. And a firefighter will, could, could join that panel who was up there. It's going to be something that will probably carry over to the next year as a year later, what, this building is, the rebuilding of a whole city almost, just about, is going to take place here. And, and basically, the, I heard the Park District actually is back in business, but there's not much. but there's not much, not many people who live up there anymore and they've all moved out. And so it's gonna be a very interesting conference dealing with this. So, and then, and then the other thing that we talked about was keeping our eye on Prop 68, the park's environmental and water bond. It's still, it was tabled because of some reason, but it's gonna be back in the, back in the limelight coming up here. And I think as Gavin Newsom's budget was announced, a lot of things are, well, he has a lot of bills that are, things that are going into redevelopment and wildflower drought and flood protection bonds. And another one was a, basically for the campfire. I've been thinking they say campfire. I think it's a weird name to call it, campfire, but, yeah. The forestry and fire protection, burning of vegetation is one of the bills. It's AB 19. These are all things. And, and the interesting comment that, that Al made is, a lot of people have, are, do not want to return to their, to their beloved city of paradise, mainly because they're just, they're just afraid. They've lost everything. And so they're gonna, when they rebuild it, it's gonna, there's a lot of ordinances that are gonna go into place that will dictate how vegetation is taken care of around homes, how many trees far away from your structures. And so it's gonna be a basically brand-new developing city and which will be very interesting. And, and his thoughts are that it's gonna attract a younger, a younger vibrant community than what they had before. So it'll be interesting for the parks too, to see how that works out. That was all.
All right, thank you. Vice Chair Danzel.
Thank you, Chair Yearwood. So I did attend for the fifth straight year the Cordova Recreation Park District's Polar Plunge and Pancake Breakfast. Wasn't that bad this year. I mean, it was cold. If anybody saw the, saw the, the photos that I posted, it was the first one in and the first one out.
Close to the ladder, huh?
Right next to the ladder, once again. But I think rain kept people away, even though it didn't end up raining that morning, but it was, it was originally scheduled to rain that day, but kept some people away that day. And it gets colder when it's raining, trust me, because you get out of that cold water and then you got cold rain hitting you. It's just no fun. Done that one a couple of years ago. But the news media was out there once again to, to record, record those events, which was, which was nice. You know, it was, it was just, once again, a good event. Pancakes and the food were, were good and staff over there at the Senior Center did a great job. So that's what I have on that. And then something that's actually in the information articles, I can't talk about that right now, can I, Ms. Jones? Capri's board vacancy, so that, that came, came available. Their board decided to go to committee to, now they're going to interview the five candidates that are up sometime, they, was originally told by the end of this month, but not sure. So it'll be a panel of five, I think, that I'll be sitting in front of. And they just wanna know what, why I wanna be there. So it'll, it'll be interesting to see how, how that all play, plays out. This is not the first time I've run for this position, so we'll see how that goes. But other than that, I, I have definitely had some nice talks with Matt, the, the head of Capri and CRP, CPRS, over this because we've been in communication. I get emails from him saying, hey, this is what's going on. If you have any questions, call me. Let me know what's, you know, what your feelings are if you wanna back out or things like that. So we had a nice discussion the other day and one of his biggest things that he asked me to do was reach out to members of that current board or past members of that board. So I've started that communication already with one of our own here, with Director Lineback, because she sat on that, that for a while. So I've started reaching out to her and some other members at this point, just waiting back on some of that information from them.
All right. Well, thank you. All right.
It's wonderful.
It's wonderful. I don't have anything to report out on. I sadly was out of town for the polar bear plunge, which I would have definitely been there, would have definitely. As an observer, as an observer. As you all know, I don't jump until the water's back in Hagan. That's the, that was the deal. So, all right.
What are you gonna do after the water's back in Hagan?
I'm gonna make sure I'm out of town again, but, you know. Plan vacations accordingly, no. All right, so let's move on to item H2, Board Officers', Appointments' Elections.
Thank you, Chair Yearwood. Item H2A is to nominate and make appointments to board committees for the 2019 term. So thank you very much for approving item G8. That is helpful as we go forward. If the board desires to activate any of the standing committees, recommendation is to have the chairperson do the nomination and then the full board vote on them individually. I did provide in the analysis section the projections for 2019 for the committees that we know will be needed for sure. And those are the budget and finance and district policies, as well as the PMRID nominating committee. As you know, all of the standing committees will conform to the Brown Act and will have a posted agenda. So I will now turn it over to Chair Yearwood for his nominations.
Why, thank you. All right. Well, I do only intend to nominate for three of the, the committees, the three being budget and finance, district policies, and then the PMRID Oversight Nominating Committee this year. Y'all ready?
Go for it.
All right. Don't, you may not wanna get so excited about that now. All right, so for the budget and finance, I nominate Directors Reyes and Lineback to the Budget and Finance Committee for 2019 term.
Second thought?
All right.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
All right. And let's see here, I'm going to nominate Directors Reyes and Director Lineback to the District Policies Committee for 2019 term.
Second thought?
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
I guess I should've said I wanted to kinda keep continuity on those two committees because of everything you've done so far. I should've said that before we started all of that, but I'm new at this.
Danielle can still put it in.
All right, so last but not least, I nominate Chair Yearwood and Vice Chair Danzel for the PMRID Oversight Nominating Committee for the 2019 term.
Second?
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And that is all we have. So I guess we'll move on to I, Comments by Staff on Non-Agenda Items.
Thank you. Item I1 is the Districtwide Monthly Progress Report for January, and I'll turn it over to Administrator Larkin.
Great, thank you. So some highlights for the month. First, just a reminder, the annual Form 700 filing. Designated positions, including the 11 new ones added to the district's Conflict of Interest Code in 2018, will receive email notification from Sacramento County in mid-January for the Form 700 filing period when that opens. This initiates the annual online filing process, which will conclude on April 1st. And I believe our board members also get that. So if you get that in the email and if you have any questions, comments, concerns, we have an expert to my right who would be more than happy. And I, of course, am available for your assistance in helping you fill out that form if you need it. I'm sure you're all veterans at this point with that. Couple things of interest, Zumba instructor Gerardo Martinez Rosco, we'll go with that, co-hosted a Zumba-a-thon fundraiser for the victims of the campfire with CRPD's help. And with another instructor, they raised over $4,000 as a fundraiser at the Mather Sports Center gym. So that was a great thing. And it was a timely thing too. So it was pretty soon after the incident, we were able to activate and work with a nonprofit to get some fundraising going for them. So I felt very proud of staff to getting that going quickly. The annual Christmas tree lighting happened and our favorite cupcake was a part of the nativity scene again this year, so I wanted to make sure I highlighted that for Director Yearwood, who's a huge fan of cupcakes.
Should have t-shirts.
We might. Camp Cordova Winter Camp went off. It was a huge success this year. It was a one-week camp, which welcomed 23 campers. And we had some great comments from parents who thought that the quality of the program this year was really high and felt important enough to send me an email complimenting the staff and the content and the coordination and the professionalism of our staff. So excellent job for the recreation staff that hosted that camp this past winter. Some major highlights in our marketing and communications, we have a new CRPD blog. We're moving into the 2019 era. The official CRPD blog went live on December 21st, while stories will continue to be shared through print press, like the Gray Fund Independent Social Media and the district website are not conducive to full-length stories. Thus, staff sought an opportunity to provide an avenue for immediate press releases so the community can be first to know what CRPD is up to. Check out the new blog and the website is listed there. Pretty cool. Also, we sent out a communications survey on December 5th. Staff launched the survey to gather data regarding the effectiveness of current district marketing tactics. The survey has almost 300 responses as of December 27th, which is huge. And the staff have already analyzed some of the insightful data. The survey will close in early January 2019 or at a $500, 500 response rate, whichever comes first. The next steps will be in creating a detailed report of the discoveries on the analysis and findings and have a proposal for an updated or new marketing communication strategies based on that analysis. So that's pretty cool that we were able to get feedback so quickly and people are participating at that rate, which is fantastic. Some things at the Senior Center I wanted to bring to your attention. December 14th, Sacramento District Attorney's Office hosted a workshop on the topic of elder abuse. Participants were given information on signs to look for and what steps to take if they suspect elder abuse. They do a fantastic over at this, fantastic job over at the Senior Center, offering good educational opportunities for our seniors. Also, the district executed a contract for $21,788 through SMUD's Complete Energy Solutions Program to change lighting out at the Sporthor Mather Sports Center building. SMUD's contribution to the project was a rebate of $29,537 for a total project value of $51,325. We could not pass up that deal. So the lights were changed mostly over the December holiday with Planner James available for coordination with the contractor as needed. Very happy about that. Riviera East Walkway Improvement Contract was executed and forwarded to the contractor, TJR Resources. Work will begin once acceptable weather and soil conditions exist. Rosemont dugout replacement, the new dugout and fencing will be installed once the permit from SAC County has been secured. And also, SMUD requested an encroachment permit to change out SMUD-owned and maintained walkway lights to energy-efficient LEDs in several of our district parks. The parks include White Rock Community Park, Countryside Park, Lincoln Village Community Park, and Mather Sports Center. So we're working closely with SMUD, as you can see, to update some of that lighting, which really hits our goal for safe parks that meet the Measure J requirements that we were going out for. So I'm really excited to bring that to the community. We also have some great articles that were submitted and they are listed there. And also, we have a calendar of events on the following page, 138. But also, there's something to add as of today. We're looking at the date of February 7th for a ribbon cutting for the Mather Sports Center floor renovation, Kings Partnership, Kaiser Partnership, Sacramento County Partnership. So we will give you an exact time, but hold February 7th available. It's a Thursday and most likely, they're talking right now, most likely around 4:30, but we'll get more details as the plans come along. Very exciting.
Good job.
And that concludes my report.
Put that in the blog. February 7th, right?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, absolutely.
Under the monthly financial reports, the water, you know, being down to 5% left of the budget, is, could you, is there a plan for handling that shortfall in the budget?
Matt and I and Jerry are in discussions about it. Matt, do you wanna kinda go into a little more detail of what our ideas are at this point?
Yeah, I mean, on the surface, it does look very scary. I took a look at our previous years and, and we utilized like 90% of our water cost from July to December. And so last year, we only spent just north of $100,000 for the remaining six months. So churning off the water does go a long ways. Not that the 5% is gonna hold out until June. My projections were, we're gonna go over budget by about $100,000 to $120,000 if we base it off past performance and based on season. So, yeah, we're still gonna have to have a plan put together for that $100,000. And we are gonna bring mid-year budget recommendations, some that we can do internally and others that have to be done by board resolution approval. And so we'll, we'll probably have that plan laid out in February at that meeting.
All right, any other questions? All right, we'll move on. Informational items?
Thank you, Chair Yearwood. Item J1 is the Articles Correspondence and Public Outreach. We have three articles, one letter regarding the Capri board vacancy, the CRPD newsletter, and the Senior Center newsletter.
All right. Item K, Future Agenda Items, Meetings and Events Calendar.
Yes, item K1 is regarding the regular board meeting on February 20th. And we have the mid-year budget presentation, as Manager Goodell just mentioned. And then you have your January and February calendar there for your review.
All right. Will there be a poem? Just wondering. No? All right.
Thinking song and dance.
Good.
Yeah.
Maybe a rain dance to help prolong the rain season. All right, so we'll move on to L, Closed Session.
Thank you, Chair Yearwood. Item L1 for Closed Session is Public Employee Performance Evaluation pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957, title District Administrator.
All right, thank you. Let me see what time it is here.